And I was like, she should just be a commissioner. You're recalling all the years, 2026 is the ARPA dollars. And I was just really impressed by just enthusiasm and just the self commitment that you each have made to, you know, extending your life and being healthy. I hope that these lessons are trickling down within your families and that we can do some more preventative work for future generations. So I've added myself as a sponsor, so I support you, but I'm going to put on my commission hat because I need to push the government to be able to figure out what we're doing for everyone. So shifting gears here, can you just talk about what is our plan for sustainability? And I've been a vocal person to champion government not serving some without vision for all. So can you, Doc, this is more so to UT Health Sciences, can you provide us between Wednesday and Monday with additional information to understand the ZIP codes where whatever the health disparities are that you're tracking are most pertinent? So I just want to know, like, when we look at the entire Shelby County, where are the hardest, not even hardest to reach, where are we seeing any type of data that implicates where we should put the next Shelby Cares? Because I would like to see us be able to scale this up to meet a certain standard. And it's unclear for me today, are we just doing it, you know, kind of à la carte per the commissioner's discretion? Or are we doing this methodically to ensure that we are putting a grid across Shelby County? Wherever there is the most need, we're putting a Shelby Cares. So that's the first question. The second one is just related. I've seen a lot of seniors come up and speak. Is this just for a certain age demographic or is this open to all ages?
I'm going to jump in if that's okay. Blair Benavides, Office of Innovation and Strategic Communications. So let me take your first question, your second question first. So it is open to anyone. It is, there is no age limit. We have seen more seniors engaging in the program, but there is absolutely no age limit. There's also no restrictions on where in the county you live as to whether or not you can access a location. So let me, so let me just address that first. The second, the second thing, really going back to your first question, and I think that's a really good question. So we would like very much to expand the Shelby Cares model, which is really utilizing the neighborhood health hub model across Shelby County government. Now, obviously, we can't do it all at once, right? So we have to take it in small bites. And this, this, this program, Shelby Cares, the one and only of these hubs that is funded by Shelby County government, has proven to be very successful. It was born out of the Office of Innovation and Strategic Communications. And, you know, I really view my office as a place where pilot programs can happen without the intent that they would continue on forever under operation of this office, but rather look for sustainable options. How do we roll this into the folds of Shelby County government, into the areas and the divisions that have the bandwidth to really deal with these programs, especially on a large scale? And what I want to say and what I've seen, what's very clear from the data, is that this pilot program has worked. It's been incredibly successful, and we are really looking forward to partnering with all of you in the future to look at how we can roll this out across the county. I know that Dr. Bailey and UT have data on where health disparities are highest at risk. They have heat maps that look at the ZIP codes that have the highest rate of cardiovascular risk factors, so heart attack and stroke. And I think that you're absolutely spot on, that those would be the areas that we'd want to target. I think we also have some ZIP code data showing use of these facilities, and they suggest that the locations that the hubs are placed in are really utilized by the people in the neighborhood, which also is further information that helps me think, and I would help, would hope guide you as well in thinking about where we place the future hubs in locations that have the highest need, in those ZIP codes where people have easy access. I'll turn it over to Dr. Bailey if he has any additional comments.
I can add just a couple things. You've heard from Blair Benavides, she'll be getting you some more data, and we'd be happy to have any kind of data discussions with you around the data and what it shows us and why we located these first three neighborhood health hubs in these really highest need areas of Memphis. I wanted to highlight the two things. One is about kids, youth and families. You know, this starts with youth, right? And we have had this initial focus on adults and older adults, mainly because that's where the cost savings are the greatest, the lives saved are the quickest, you know, where we have the most potential to reduce ED visits, hospitalizations for people that have diabetes, uncontrolled hypertension. So we did start there. But Dr. Dalgo and his team, Darnisha Garner, who's back there, the clinic manager for the Soulsville location, have really been helping us extend our efforts into working even more with families and engaging youth, children typically with their families, and work to improve the diet and the, and the, and the health of the entire family. Several of our programs are already doing that, but we're definitely planning to increase that family focus through our work. And I know Dr. Dalgo would be happy to share more with you about that and Darnisha Garner. And the last thing on sustainability I'll just mention is we really do want to make this sustainable. So we have been working very aggressively with, with Tennessee Medicaid, with Ten Care over the last three years to get approval for billing for health coach services in the context of team-based care. And one thing we'll be coming back to ask you about is we want to actually use what we can collect in billing, which we've started to do in two of our locations now, to help offset the costs of the program moving forward. We're also in discussions with some employers around serving their employees with health hub services and to help, you know, subsidize this, these activities, because we very much want to make the program sustainable over time to the greatest extent that we can.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Caswell, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I'd like to start just saying, I'd like to be added as a sponsor.
All right. So Commissioner Caswell made the motion. Commissioner Wright has made the second.
And to say that I had.
Hold on one second. Can we accept that without a objection?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much. Commissioner Caswell.
Chairwoman. And say I had the opportunity to go down to Third Street and see these awesome classes in space and seeing the impact that it was making to hear some of these stories today was what I saw that day when I took a tour of that facility and went back to talk to people in our community about this. And I know I was with a group of seniors the other night, and we shared about opportunities to help with better health outcomes in the Raleigh, in our surrounding communities. So I look forward to expanding. When you look at this, and I appreciate what you just shared about the sustainability, when you look at this from the standpoint of the impact of those who go into Regional One because we have that generational of people who have not had that health care and been taught about the impact of long-term health on diabetes, obesity, and the other things that come with that. That's something that's been a focus of mine, it's big time when I understood a lot of what I learned about adverse childhood experience and those experiences on health outcomes later in life on individuals that we have just left in these communities without offering them opportunities like this. So I commend again Shelby Cares, Shelby County government, be thinking about health as being one of our priorities, right? Of things that we should be focusing on as a county, the return on investment is there. We just heard it in so many of these stories that we could have sadly been burying many of these individuals if they would not have this type of services. So I pray as we think about the money we invest into Regional One for those individuals who cannot afford health care, how do that look when we preactively invest into things like this into our communities that this should be that care? And I, and I hopefully, even at the state level, when we push and talk about the Affordable Care Act and the fact that you're not, we're not going after those dollars, we should be, when it can invest in opportunities like this that brings a return on investment that we don't have to pay as much later when we can do it right now. So thank you all for the work that you're doing. I've seen it in person. I've heard many of the stories and I look forward to Raleigh and Nutbush and unincorporated Shelby County seeing this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Caswell. Commissioner Ford, you're in the queue.
I want y'all to look at something. For those folks who came up here and said you were part of 38116 and 109, can you raise your hand again, please? I'm going to take this with me. I want y'all to see something. 3810, 38109 and 1116, right? 38109 and 1116, right? Y'all looking at this? These are my employers, not y'all. I want you to look at them. Y'all that sit up here, these are my employers, not y'all. I say that because when they came down, they gave genuine stories about a service, many services that are in the district. And it has been a privilege making sure that these resources are very close to where you live, work and play, period. I hope y'all heard me when I say that. To my colleagues to my left, and not to take your playbook away, but you got a great playbook. If we want this, and I know the CFO may not want to hear this, but I'm going to say it anyway, if you want to stop having to come down here and beg for something that you should have to wherever it's not in the budget, you got to beg over and over and over again, if we have to do something in this 2026 budget or codify this so that you won't have to keep coming down for these resources, that might have to be an option. We can talk about all the other options, but you know, if you codify this, and I'll give you an example. We brought something regarding the tax relief, and I'm going to correlate it to this because since we're talking about health, financial health goes right in the same category of what we're talking about here. We had to codify because the tax relief matching program kept getting taken out. And sometimes that's money that you can use to keep your lights on, to take care of your meds and anything else. This is great, and I support this, but if we have to ask and request every budget, y'all paid your dues, y'all have done more things than I've done in my 45 years on this earth. So let's just make it happen because I wanted to introduce you all again because I'm like, you all are my employers, not these two people and not the 12 other people that are up here. It's the 38109 and 1116 people. So in my last five seconds, I support this item, but let's see what we can do to make this permanent so you won't have to keep on coming back over and over and over again. My employers, not y'all, do the right thing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you, Chair. Okay. So something, I just want to just point this out, like, when you get to develop health disparities later in life, it's my understanding that there could be a buildup to get to those points where you actually have to deal with something. And something that I'm seeing in the neighborhood level are the corner stores and the diets that people rely on. I'm seeing sugars like upward of 120 grams, and it is, I actually was led to look to see, and I feel like the daily recommended intake is somewhere around 30 grams. So I don't understand how we're able to even be able to be consumers of certain things that clearly have health implications. I'm seeing a lot of dental implications. I'm talking to you, Doc, maybe we'll continue this conversation, but there's a lot more that we need to do to engage other generations, to be able to get them resourced. I would wonder how many young adults are in these different respective hub areas that just overlook it as senior programming. So I'm not sure what we're doing to uniquely tailor programming for the generations, but I can assure you that as I'm watching my peers age, the health disparities are manifesting already, and I'm having serious concerns about how they're advising their children and just the lack of understanding that they have personally about their health. And so I will join the Raleigh conversation to advocate for Orange Mountain in particular because it is uniquely situated, it has a health department, it has a strong senior citizen community center. It's just a really unique area to be able to be one of the next Shelby Care sites. So I'll put a pin right there. The other thing is Parks and Neighborhoods. If we could form some type of joint partnership with Parks and Neighborhoods so that they could adopt the programming, that we could split the bill between county and city of Memphis in their budgets, I think that that could be a sustainable funding pathway to move forward. There's no reason why you should walk into any of the community centers and not see a health coach that you can access, and I think that that could be a great way for us to move forward. I just, I mean, even just coming, I heard some people saying that their doctors refer them. I don't know what we can do to be able to figure out how we can get physicians to buy in to being referrers of this at all levels of service. So I just want to be a part of the team that's going to help be able to scale this up to where I know that it should be, because the testimonies were very compelling today. And I just, my heart is always listening for the gap. So we have everyone who came out today, but how many more people are not in the know about Shelby Cares? How many more people are dealing with the social isolation and the health disparities alone, and they're living down the street from a community center? So I do think that there's a lot that we need to do, and I would like to see the administration make a bold commitment to the sustainability plan and represent that to us so that we can do the same. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Thornton. We're going to go to Commissioner Ford, and then we're going to take this to a vote. We've still got a heavy agenda in front of us. All right, Commissioner Ford.
Well, I appreciate that, but when one particular item takes up a whole lot of time, I don't want to discount the time that my employers deserve to have. I understand what you're saying. I have one question for finance, so if one of the gentlemen could allow Ms. Tipton to come up, because I couldn't find it in here. And I'm not just asking this because a lot of my constituency is here. Ms. Tipton, good morning, or afternoon, evening, whatever it is. I was trying to look at the summary sheet, et cetera, et cetera, couldn't find what I actually needed. The closest thing I came up with was there's a MOU that the UT Health Science Center has $100,000 per quarter that they request, which means they're, they're getting $400,000 a year. So my question is, how much is the overall operation for Shelby Cares Health? Well, if you, if you want to answer it, that's fine. And if you want to acquiesce to the number.
Blair Benavides, Director of Innovation and Strategic Communications. So every quarter, it's $100,000. About 86% of that goes to salary support for the health coaches, the medical support for all the services that are being offered at the, the health hub. The rest of it goes to things like overhead utilities, janitorial services, supplies.
Ms. Tipton, do you agree with that? Because I'm trying to look at the overall so that if this does come back, I'm trying to preserve what we're, we're having here, so I'm asking the questions that others may not have asked. So Ms. Tipton.
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. Yes, I agree with that.
Okay. Thank you for indulging me on that because if we are going to do, and I'm not going to take the whole 57 seconds, if we're going to do what we got to do, this commissioner is on board, and I'm going to be on board when it comes to my district, okay? I'm just going to let you know that. There are some people that don't want me sitting in this seat right now, don't like it when I'm breathing here, when I'm sitting here, the devil is busy. That's why when I came to see y'all, y'all say, how you doing and everything? You checked on my health? I'm checking on yours while I'm sitting in this seat. Because y'all are my employers, not these folks I serve with. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Ford. Madam Clerk, please per the screen of vote on item number eight. Okay, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye bells from Commissioner Caswell, Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Brooks, Chairman Whaley. We have seven eye votes.
All right, item eight, we'll go down with a favorable recommendation. Just want to thank everyone for coming in, for sharing your stories. Keep up the great work, and we're happy to support it. All right, Madam Parthenetarian, thank you. Please read item number nine.
Item nine is a resolution amending the fiscal year 2025 operating budget in Shelby County, Tennessee, of Shelby County, Tennessee, for the purposes of providing for the reimbursement of certain expenditures from the general fund of Shelby County, Tennessee, and the amount of up to $50 million from the proceeds of the 2B issues not to exceed $300 million. Aggregate principal amount of Shelby County, Tennessee, general obligation public improvements in school bonds, 2025 Series A. This item requires the allocation and appropriation of fiscal year 2025 general fund dollars and the amount of $50 million sponsored by Commissioner Miska Clay Bibbs.
All right. Thank you, item nine, moved by Commissioner Wright. If we can get a second.
For the discussion.
All right, second by Commissioner Ford. All right. Good afternoon, Director Tipton.
Thank you. Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. This resolution basically is from a resolution that was approved back on, in October 2024 to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount of $300 million, not to exceed $300 million, for various capital improvement projects within the county, including the schools. Within that resolution, it allows the administration and the Director of Administration and Finance to utilize or to expend dollars from other county sources to fund the events that are around that resolution, should we not have the bonds in hand at this time. So right now, I am exercising that privilege of requesting that we utilize $50 million of general fund dollars until we can get our bond in place, at which time the $50 million will be reimbursed back to the general fund. So it is just a, a way of continuing all of the projects that are in play right now and continuing to fund them until we can get our bond in place, which will be in place very shortly.
Okay. Thanks so much. Commissioner Ford.
Ms. Tipton, good afternoon again. So we're here because it's almost the end of March and we don't have that bond money. Is that correct?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. That is correct.
But we forecasted and whatnot about us being able to be done with this and having it given to us by March. I remember that there was a long conversation about, we don't want to take the schools' money, this, that and the other. Because we have not gotten the funding, and that 30-day moratorium would have already transpired, been done and everything else, it sounds as if the deadlines that you thought were going to be made have not been made, so now we have to do this, we have to borrow because we haven't gotten the money that we were supposed to get. I say that because I know there are some things that your office can not control. I'm just going to go ahead and say that. And there are some things that your office can only control with the information that is given to you in a timely manner. Do you, I was looking for an exhibit. Do we not have a list of the items that you plan on reimbursing temporarily for the purposes of us being able to function accordingly? And I'm asking this because I'm looking at the resolution, and I don't see it specifically. It says expending up to $50 million from the general fund to fund public works projects, et cetera, et cetera. Are we talking about the fund balance temporarily?
Audrey Tipton, Director of Administration and Finance. Yes, we are, and it is temporary. And what we would be funding would be the capital improvement budget, the, the actual five-year plan for the current year, any of those projects that may come forward, then we would fund those. Now, we anticipate having the audit completed, as promised by our auditors, by the end of this month, which is next Monday, at which time we will go out for debt. And when we go out for debt, we should have cash in hand, hopefully, early May. At that time, the funding, any funding, if any, is used, this is to put it in place should we have to write a check. If any is used, that money will then go back to the general fund.
Is there a GASB that allows that to where we won't get in any type of trouble? Because we're talking about bond money, cash, cash, bond money, and we start getting into some variables. I think this is important that we're going to vote on this.
You want traditional time now?
I just need some, if, you're with a bond counsel, right? If I can get that answer, I won't have to exhaust my other three minutes.
Yep. Jeffrey Morris, Butler Snow, LLP, Bond Counsel, 6075 Poplar Avenue. So all of this was originally authorized in the intent resolution for the bonds passed back in, I believe, September, which, October, yes, which authorizes the Director of Administration and Finance to expend funds and then reimburse them from bond funds. This is all also authorized under the tax code, wherein you can reimburse expenditures from, to 60 days before that intent resolution and up to 18 months after the expenditure. So while I can't speak on GASB or accounting standards from a bond and tax perspective, it is allowed.
Okay. I'll probably either abstain or ask this to go down without a recommendation so I can get that information. If y'all don't mind sending that to me via email, that'll help me out for Monday's vote.
Okay.
I like to move it down without a recommendation of that.
All right. It's been moved by Commissioner Ford to send down without recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Mills, without objection. This item, number nine, will go down without recommendation. All right? Thank you all very much. We do have an add-on item, Budget and Finance, item number 10. We should have that passed out. Madam Parthenetarian, can you please read to the record item 10?
Item 10 is an add-on item. Item 10 is a resolution rescinding, Resolution Number 28, dated February 10, 2025, initiating the request for qualifications, RFQ process, to engage a firm employing certified public accountants in order to perform a forensic financial audit of the Memphis Shelby County Schools, MSCS Financials, sponsored by Commissioner Amber Mills.
All right, item 10, moved by Commissioner Ford, seconded by Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you. This is a good resolution because we, this body, did a good job. We leveraged $50,000 for forensic audit for Memphis Shelby County Schools, and we were hoping the state comptroller would come in and help a little. Well, he did better than that and said they will do the whole forensic audit, they will fund it, they will get it done. And there's been some confusion out there with ours out there and theirs, and the comptroller asked that we resend ours and they'll just take care of it for us. So this is to resend the $50,000. And there is an exhibit on the back to show that it is budgeted, and they said they're going to get that done this afternoon, per your request, Chair.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Ford?
I just want to say thank you, Commissioner Mills, for being one of my sponsors on the initial. So when people thought, oh, $50,000 ain't nothing, now we're talking about a couple million dollars. That's what you call good governance. That's what you call making it work. Some people don't want the audit to happen. It's going to happen. That's all.
Okay. All right. We lost our clerk briefly here, but I think, let's see.
What happened?
All right. Yeah, Ms. Evelyn can help us. We're just going to vote.
Wait a minute. We do. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All right, we can cast our votes here on item 10. And I think we can go ahead and close the screen and record the vote. and close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, and Chairman Whaley. We have five eye votes.
All right, this item 10 will go down with a favorable recommendation. This will conclude Budget and Finance. We're going to call it Committee Seven, Economic Development Tourism. Madam Parliamentarian, please read item number one.
Item one is an ordinance second reading, a joint ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Shelby County, Tennessee, and the Council of the City of Memphis, enacted pursuant to the Community Redevelopment Act of 1998 and the Uniformity and Tax Improvement Financing Act of 2012, providing for the establishment of the Cleveland Street Quarter Redevelopment Trust Fund Ordinance, sponsored by Commissioner Mikel Lowery, Commissioner Henry E. Brooks, Commissioner Shante K. Abant, and Commissioner Brittany Thornton.
All right, thank you. We need a mover and second here for item one. Moved by Commissioner Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Wright. Okay. All right, so a second reading of this ordinance. I don't, let's not look away at a presentation on this, but I know we've gotten it in quite detail before. So if there's no question on this, I think we can press the screen to vote on item one.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Wright, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have three eye votes.
All right, that item will go down with a favorable recommendation. That will conclude economic development. Commissioner Brooks, turn it over to you for Core City.
We will call to order Committee Eleven, Core City Neighborhoods and Housing. Madam Parliamentarian, please read the first item.
Item one is a resolution approving the sale of 35 county-owned delinquent tax parcels acquired by Shelby County from various Shelby County tax sales to identified purchasers at various prices collectively totaling $235,470 pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Section 67-5 to 2507, and authorizing the Shelby County Mayor to execute reclaim deed, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
Thank you. That item has been moved by Chairman Whaley and seconded by Commissioner Wright. Ms. Wood?
Thank you. Esther Sykes Wood, Land Bank Administrator. The total sales price is $235,470. The total back taxes were $441,034.90, which leads to a negative $205,564.90 on collecting back taxes. This is, however, $5,220 over the asking price in collection, particular to out-of-town purchasers. Of the 35 properties, 14 are purchased by out-of-town buyers, and there were seven out-of-town buyers total.
Okay, just one question here in reference to the question I had last time regarding overlaying the out-of-town purchases.
Yes, Commissioner, I apologize. I've been out of the office with family issues, but we will get that for the next, for the next one. That's not in on base yet.
Good deal. Send no other members in the queue. No further discussion. We will move this item to the question. Madam Clerk, please prepare the vote. All members disdired to vote, please cash your votes. Madam Clerk, may we have a tally?
We have eye votes from Commissioners Mills, Wright, Thornton, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have five eye votes. I'm sorry, that's six eye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation. That concludes Committee Eleven, Core City Neighborhoods and Housing. We will now convene Committee Ten, General Government. Madam Parliamentarian, please read the first item.
Item one is a resolution approving the election of notaries public for appointment and reapportment of Shelby County, Tennessee, sponsored by Commissioner Henry E. Brooks.
Thank you. This item has been moved by Chairman Whaley and seconded by Commissioner Thornton, and the county attorney reports no conflicts by the Board of Commissioners. Let's see, seeing no members in the queue, we will call for the question. Madam Clerk, please prepare the vote. Every member voted. Madam Clerk, may we have the tally?
We have eye votes from Commissioners Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have six eye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, please read the second item.
Item two is an ordinance second reading, ordinance approving and setting the salary of the Shelby County Sheriff for the 2026 through 2030 term of office, sponsored by Commissioner Dr. Edmund Ford Jr. This item was amended and deferred in March 5, 2025 committee meeting.
This item has been moved by Chairman Whaley and seconded by Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Ford, you recognize.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and use my three minutes here, and then I'll ask for this to come back into the committee for the purposes of acquiring more information that some commissioners have asked me to get. The information that I have been able to get so that there can be some type of comparison. Nashville Davidson Metro Chief with a population of 712,000 people makes a salary of $287,260 a year. Your Knox County Chief with 500,000 people makes a salary of $208,000 a year. The Memphis Police Chief, Chief Davis, makes $280,000 a year. Got information from C Task, our trustee, and it's been stated that out of all 95 counties, we're the only county where the mayor's administration makes near or more than the electeds that come up, almost including the sheriff. When I talked to the Sheriff Deputy Union, the number that they came up with that would be commensurate for the purposes of making sure that the deputies don't go over the sheriff was 235,000, which we put in the ordinance. But I'd like to go ahead and get one other piece of information for you all regarding C Task, so that you can see how they work their salaries, for the purposes of making sure that whatever we do agree on, this commissioner will support any increase that will create, that will not create any compression, because this is the number that we have to, that would have to be lived with for the next four years. And what we would not want to do is to keep 199,500. Four years later, you have administrators, deputies, and others that are either at or beyond the salary. Dr. Taylor, for example, great worship that she does, but she's already 10,000, almost $10,000 more than the sheriff. So whoever the next sheriff, whoever here she is, it's important that we put that salary that's competitive. I've already given examples, and I'm going to close on this, that the Metro Davidson Chief already makes $90,000 more. Your Knox County Chief with half the population already makes $10,000 more. Chief Davis makes $90,000 more. So with that being said, I'd like to move this to the next committee meeting for the purposes of getting the C Task information, and then we should be ready to vote on this item. So that's my motion.
All right, it's been moved that this item be moved to the next committee meeting, which would be April 9. Can we do that without objection? Well, it's been moved by Commissioner Ford and seconded by Commissioner Wright, and we do that without objection. So moved. This item will be moved to the April 9 committee meeting. Next item, Madam Parliamentarian, item number three.
Item three is an ordinance second reading, ordinance amending the Shelby County Charter to amend, one, Article 5, Section 5.08, Conflicts of Interest; two, Article 5, Section 5.24, Recall of Elected County Officers; and three, Article 6, Section 6.02, County Boardation, sponsored by Chairman Michael Whaley.
This item has been moved by Commissioner Thornton and seconded by Chairman Whaley. Okay, Chairman Whaley.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to move a substitute that's been redlined with some changes based on feedback from the first reading.
Okay, we have a substitute that has been entered and moved by Commissioner Whaley and seconded by, who's seconded? Commissioner Brooks? Wright? Seconded by Commissioner Wright, thank you. I will now hear from the sponsor.
All right, thank you so much. I'll defer to Ms. Cox on this, but just to go through some of the redline changes that sort of deal with the question around substantial financial interest. I know that that was a question that came up around the definition of that. So some of the proposed language here, I think, would help address that. But Ms. Cox, do you want to speak to that further?
Felice Cox, Contracts Administrator. That's correct, Chair. We are, it's still a work in progress, but we are making an attempt to encompass as much as necessary, but not anything that is as broad as what it was in the past. And so this is the second stab. We have pretty much deleted most of the previous provision.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Are you, have you finished?
I am finished.
Okay. I do have a question in reference to, okay, since no officer or employee, whether elected or appointed, shall have a direct or indirect interest in any outside contract job, whatever, work, service for the county unless otherwise permitted by applicable state law. So as an example, so that for clarity and understanding for me, does that mean that if I am, just say, I'm a doctor or physician, if you will, I am forbidden from voting on or participating in any votes regarding Methodist, Baptist, or any hospital?
Well, the good thing about this modification is that it actually is tracking state law. And so there are better examples and better references to make those type decisions. And I think in some circumstances, you may be able to, based on state law. In some circumstances, you cannot. So it all depends on the specific situation.
Okay. If I'm an engineer and I work for XYZ, and XYZ has contracts before the county commission, okay, what's my posture?
Yes, you, as long as you're receiving a salary.
Right. I work for XYZ. XYZ has contract before the commission. So what's my posture?
That would be, you would not be able to vote on that, but you could work there.
And still be on the county commission.
Yes, as long as you receive a salary, you could work there, but you could not vote on the matter.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, the other part is you cannot have an ownership interest in it.
Thinking about a career change, Commissioner Brooks?
Yeah, I'm going to do my physician work. What is that, what is that TCA number?
I believe it's 124101.
124101?
124101.
Okay, thank you. It's just a little confusing for me, you know. Seeing no other members in the queue, we will move to the question. Madam Clerk, please prepare the board for the vote. Every member voted. Did you get me? I changed. I'm, 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 okay, I voted yes. All right, Madam Clerk.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Wright, Thornton, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have four eye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, item number four.
Item four is an ordinance second reading, ordinance to amend the Shelby County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 18, Article 2, Code of Ethics, to ensure county ethical provisions are applied consistently and more closely aligned with the charter and state law, sponsored by Chairman Michael Whaley.
All right, this item has been moved by Chairman Whaley and seconded by Commissioner Wright. Seeing no members in the queue, we will move to the vote. I'm sorry, Ms. Cox, did you want to comment on this item?
This is, as, as been represented before, there are only a few changes to this. I'm sorry, Felice Cox, Contracts Administrator. This is about the definition of monuments clause. This is also about changing the number for the members of the board, at this board.
Okay, just to, just to clarify, though, there is no substitute on this. This is the original language from the first reading.
That's correct.
Yep.
All right, seeing no members in the queue, move to the question. Madam Clerk, please prepare the vote. The board for the vote, every member voted. Madam Clerk, may we have a tally?
We have eye votes from Commissioners Wright, Thornton, Brooks, and Chairman Whaley. We have four eye votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This item goes down with a favorable recommendation. Madam Parliamentarian, item number five.
Item five is an ordinance second reading, ordinance approving and setting the salary for the Board of County Commissioners for Shelby County, Tennessee, for the 2026 through 2030 term of office to account for inflation effective after the August 2026 election, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman.
Okay, do we have a mover? It was moved by Chairman Whaley and seconded by Commissioner Thornton. The sponsor is not here. Let's see. Do we have someone to speak on this, or do we want to just send this down without, this is first reading?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to send this down without recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. This item goes, go down without recommendation. Can we do that without objection? So moved. And that concludes general government.
All right.
We are adjourned.
Yeah, very good. Thanks so much, Commissioner Brooks. I'll call to order Committee 17, Workforce Development. If we can read item number one.
Item one is ordinance first reading, ordinance amending Article 4, Division 3, Section 2-231 of the Shelby County Code of Ordinances, creating a procurement initiative to incentivize apprenticeship programs for construction vendors in Shelby County, sponsored by Commissioner Erica Sugarman.
If we can get a mover and seconder on this item, please.
Move or second?
Commissioner Wright or Commissioner Thornton, you want to move or second this item?
Yes.
Commissioner Thornton, thank you. Commissioner Wright, thanks. All right. It looks like we have a substitute on this item, so I will also move the substitute, seconded by Commissioner Thornton. Let's see. I don't think the caption's different. So there's no change in the caption for the substitute, but I think, so the sponsor's also not here on this item, so I would make a motion to send this down without recommendation. Got a seconded by Commissioner Wright. If we can do that without objection, this item will go down without recommendation.
And I'm wondering if we suspend the rules because the changes need to be reflected in a red line for our program.
Okay, we'll make sure we redline the changes. All right.
Who was the motion to? Who was the motion to send down without recommendation?
It was me, seconded by Thornton. Okay, and that was without objection. So that item has gone down without recommendation. That'll conclude workforce development. We can call up Committee eight, Community Services. Item number one.
Item one is a resolution approving a piggyback contract with Intercon Security Systems, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $90,035.40 for the term from April 1st, 2025 through June 3rd, 2025, for the purpose of providing security services at three locations for the Division of Community Services and one location for the Mayor's Office of Innovation, with the option to renew for two additional one-year periods beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2027. This item requires expenditure of FY 2025 County General Operating Funds in an amount not to exceed $72,924.60 and FY 2025 grant funds in an amount not to exceed $17,110.80, sponsored by Commissioner Charlie Caswell Jr.
Thank you. Item one here moved by Commissioner Wright, seconded by Commissioner Thornton. We have anyone here to present on this? Commissioner Mills?
I do have questions on this, and I don't see anyone, so I'll move to send this down without recommendation.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Mills and sent it down without recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Wright. If we can do that without objection, this item, number one, will go down without recommendation. All right, thanks so much. Let's call it order, this closes Committee eight, Community Services. Call Committee 15, Facilities, Real Property, Capital Improvements. Please read item number one.
Item one is a resolution approving a sublease agreement and assignment assumption of lease in Second Amendment to lease by and among Family Safety Center of Memphis and Shelby County, Inc., Shelby County, Tennessee, and 1750 Madison LLC for the office space located at 1750 Madison, Memphis, Tennessee, 38104, for the term beginning April 1, 2025, on a month-to-month basis, with a total contract amount not to exceed $17,500 monthly or a $210,000 annually. This item requires expenditure and appropriation of FY 2025 budget funds in the amount of $52,500, sponsored by Commissioner David Bradford.
All right, thanks. Moved by Commissioner Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Mills. Sorry, Commissioner Wright, Vice Chair Wright, I see you. You good, okay? Commissioner Mills?
Are you here to speak on this item?
All right.
I was just gonna, since we have no one to speak to, it's send it down without recommendation.
All right, moved by Commissioner Mills to send this item down without recommendation, seconded by, you're not, you're not speaking on this item. All right, seconded by Commissioner Wright? No. You're speaking on this item. Okay, all right. Chief?
To get down. Dorcas John Griffin, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Shelby County Government. The resolution before you seeks to enter into a sublease agreement and a subsequent assumption for the 1750 Madison property that has been occupied by the Family Safety Center. Catching my breath. This sublease and assumption of this lease is our effort to support the transitioning of the coordination of domestic violence services and the Family Justice Center model that the Family Safety Center has been providing to county government. Just as a background, the Family Safety Center announced the closing of its doors on March 5th of services of domestic violence, to domestic violence victims. While we had been in discussions about the potential of this transition for a couple of weeks, it did occur a bit sooner than we had time to react to with a complete plan to transition the services. So we have been working with them to try to make everything happen very quickly because of this March 5th date. Even as we're figuring out the details of integrating these services into county government effective July 1st, we have acted quickly to maintain the physical space of 1750 Madison to ensure that we have the co-location space for the Family Justice Center model. We were able to work through this resolution that's in front of you. I want to make sure before I close my comments that I mention that this lease does not incur any new funding being requested from this commission. We were able to shift unobligated resources from an existing contract that we have with the Family Safety Center to pay this lease for the remainder of this year, fiscal year. I also want to make sure that I say to you, unrelated to this lease, that we are also currently working with the State of Tennessee and the City of Memphis to secure funding that was previously given to the Family Safety Center to support the integration of these services into the county for the future. With that, I will just say that the administration recommends approval of the item and happy to take any questions that you may have.
All right, thanks, Chief. Commissioner Thornton?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chief, for that information. You said this is coming from or being covered by unobligated funds. So we had $210,000 worth of unobligated funds?
So there is an existing contract for $240,000 with the Family Safety Center that they did not finish out because they closed their doors. There is, if you look at the resolution, it covers, the lease itself covers for the rest of this fiscal year, and we anticipate in next fiscal year that we will go into at least a portion of this lease. It's a month-to-month lease. We just need enough time to get the lay of the land to figure out what we're going to do permanently for space. There is, within the Division of Community Services budget, that $240,000 contract with the Family Safety Center, that would not happen next year. So we would anticipate being able to utilize those resources for the lease that we would need.
So is this the same location that?
Right now it is. Right now it is, you know, there are more discussions to happen about physical location, but, you know, we are putting out a fire and thinking about how to prevent the next fire at the same time. So we are staying in this location because we need to stay there today. But we are also exploring what we need to do moving forward to fully implement the Family Justice Center model.
How much square footage is this space?
I actually do not have those numbers in front of me, but I can get that to the full commission before tomorrow.
And when we negotiate for our lease? I mean, I've never paid $17,000 a month for a leased space. Is this a competitive rate? Or who is guiding us through this particular commitment?
So we are assuming a lease that they currently have because they have been in this space. What, again, as we move forward, we are going to be looking at, fully looking at what our options are and potentially renegotiating space, rates, et cetera. But we had to move very quickly to assume the current space where law enforcement is located and where partners have been located.
Do we know much about 1750 Madison's owner? Is this a local LLC?
I do not have those answers, but I can get that for you before the next meeting.
Okay, awesome. If you could send it to the entire body?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Thornton, and thank you, Chief Griffin, for the report. Madam Clerk, we can prepare the screen to vote on this item. Okay, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have eye votes from Commissioners Mills, Ford, Wright, Thornton, and Whaley. We have Chairman Whaley. We have five eye votes.
Okay, this item one will go down with a favorable recommendation. This will conclude Committee 15. We do have Director Bromley with us here, so maybe save us a little time on Monday. I'm going to move to reopen Committee eight, Community Services, if we can do that without objection, and move to reconsider item number one. Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Commissioner Thornton without objection. We're now reconsidering item number one. And it was moved, do we need a different mover and seconder? All right, moved by Commissioner Thornton, seconded by Commissioner Wright. All right, Director Bromley?
Thank you so much for reopening. Sandy Bromley, Division of Community Services. This is a resolution approving a piggyback contract. So this is a contract that Shelby County Sheriff's Office negotiated and has already pre-approved with Intercon Security Systems to provide security across the county. We now need to piggyback on their contract to provide security services at three Division of Community Services locations and one Office of Innovation location, which you heard a lot about this morning, Shelby, this afternoon, Shelby Cares. So those four locations will be funded out of this one contract. I'm happy to answer additional questions, but the administration recommends approval of this item.
Okay, thanks so much. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you. I just have a question. The Office of Innovation, how many locations are there? Is there just one? What, what is it that it needs security?
Sandy Bromley, Division of Community Services. This is at the, their Third Street Shelby Cares location, 3358 South Third Street.
Okay, and it's security, like person security? Okay.
I'm sorry, Sandy Brom, building security for that building.
Okay. People, manpower?
Yes.
Okay. And how many offices with the Office of Innovation locations are there? Not just the Shelby Cares Health stuff, but the Office of Innovation?
Dorcas John Griffin, Deputy Chief, CAO. So I think I understand your question. So the Office of Innovation administers the Shelby Cares program. So although it says in this resolution, Office of Innovation is for the Shelby Cares Clinic that's on Third, where the security will be. In terms of the Office of Innovation, how many offices they have? They are only located on the 11th floor. There, there is probably a staff of five to six people that are on the 11th floor.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Does that, does that answer the question?
It does, that it's a Shelby Cares location and not Office of Innovation. That does.
So the, the, I think why, why you see this the same way that you see the Division of Community Services, it is a, it is a program of the Office of Innovation. And so in the resolution, we refer to the offices that are administering the, the work.
Okay, I just remember how that was all started. That's why I asked. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Thornton?
So I'm trying to follow y'all's, y'all's conversation there. So the three locations are for the three Shelby Cares?
Sandy Bromley, Division of Community Services. There are three locations for the Division of Community Services. Our Crime Victims and Rape Crisis Center at 1060 Madison, Community Services Agency at 1188 Minna Place, and our Youth and Family Resource Center at 3157 Powers Road. Then there is the fourth location, and I will let, now that Blair is here, she can talk more about that.
Blair Benavides, Office of Innovation and Strategic Communications. So we are obligated per our agreement with UT to provide security services at that location in Westwood. And rather than enter into our own agreement with Intercon, we decided to piggyback together with Community Services to streamline that administrative process.
So with the Shelby Cares, we only are funding one site?
Blair Benavides, Office of Innovation and Strategic Communications. Yes, that is correct. At this time, we are funding one location. That is the location in Westwood. UT has additional neighborhood health hubs that they fund either independently, on their own, or through other foundations.
And just for clarity, when you say Westwood, I've heard someone talking about Riverside earlier and then someone talking about near Crystal Palace?
Crystal Palace is, is the location that, that we fund.
But the other location at Riverside doesn't come with security?
The uptown, there's an uptown location, just up the street. That one is fully funded and operated by UT. There is another location that is new. It's the Soulsville location. That location is funded in partnership with the Kimmens-Wilson Family Foundation and the Soulsville Foundation.
Do they provide security?
I am not sure. I'm not able to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Ford?
I'm looking at this resolution again. Why? And this is a good question. And if I get brushed off, it's not going to be a nice response back. Why would this not qualify as being under CSA? In contrast to the Shelby County Mayor's Office of Innovation, the same office that we don't know how much money's being funneled through, yes, I'm saying those words, a miniature Ponzi scheme over there, if you ask me. Why is it not under CSA, which would be a better fit than this Shelby County Mayor's Office of Innovation that's on the 11th floor with five people? If you don't have an answer, I don't blame you.
No, it's, Dorcas John Griffin, Deputy CAO. It's not that I don't have an answer, but in the time allotted, I may take you all around the world. So just to be clear, these, these are three separate locations, but they are two different departments and divisions of government administering the relationship with the security contract. So it would not be appropriate to be under the Division of Community Services because it's not a program of the Division of Community Services. The same way that there are contracts with the Sheriff's Office, with Intercon, we wouldn't put all those, even if we came together, we wouldn't share them as all under the Division of Community Services. So I know that's probably not an answer to your liking, but it is the best answer I can give on this particular one.
Look, we can probably go through that budget right now, and I can probably find a whole lot of contracts, piggybacked and otherwise, that fit within particular divisions. So when I see Office of Innovation, 11th floor, five people, we don't know what their budget is, but we know it's within the CAO's office, which is where you are at, Deputy CAO.
Yes.
But do you at least know what their budget is, the Office of Innovation? We couldn't get it from your boss.
I, I, Blair Benavides, Office of Innovation and Strategic Communications. I'd be more than happy to answer the budgetary questions that you have and that you've put in front of us. The Office of Innovation with ARPA funds, started with ARPA funds, and it was a dollar amount of $4.5 million. That $4.5 million has been used to fund programs such as Shelby Cares.
All right, I only got 10 seconds left. So your FY 25 allocation for this year was what dollar amount within the CAO's office? What, what was allocated specifically for the Office of Innovation for FY 25 that was passed by this body?
Blair Benavides, Office of Innovation and Strategic Communications. The dollar amount that is, was specified for FY 25 is not something that I have in front of me. It was a $4.5 million budget that started in 2021. It has been spent down over the years. There has been no additional funds added to that budget. And so as funds are encumbered for a variety of programs, that money, again, is spent down. At this point in time, there are $0 left in the budget. They've all been encumbered or spent on programs, again, such as Shelby Cares, 901 student passport, FSA dependent care stipends for our employees.
Okay, all right.
I'll get back in.
Yeah, I see you're back in. All right, we'll go to Commissioner Mills and back to Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. I was wondering why it didn't fall under Community Services. But that's been answered. That's, I'm, we're moving on from that. I guess my question with the Department of Innovation and Strategic Communications? What's the strategic communications? I mean, what, what kind of strategic communications? What for?
Blair Benavides, Office of Innovation and Strategic Communications. We help to tailor a lot of the mayor's messaging, and so that is a big part of the strategic communication. So Kelly Roberts, who is the communications manager in my office, is responsible for tailoring a lot of those messages, sending out press releases. We're also working with other divisions and departments to help streamline communications across the government so that we can keep all of our constituents informed as well as our employee bodies.
So you're also the PR firm of the mayor's office. Okay, and how is this going to be funded after the ARPA funds are run out?
Blair Benavides, Office of Innovation and Strategic Communication. We are currently in the process of working out the FY twenty-six budget, and that will be proposed in April.
Were you, did you come on when this was first started?
No, I am a new employee. I started about seven months ago.
Okay, I want you to know this is not you. This is from when it originated and how it originated, which is not on the up and up in my book, in my world I live in. And I've got a lot of angst over that still, all these years later. So that's where this is. It is not you personally. Please don't take it personal. So it stems from that. Okay, I've gotten more of my questions answered. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Ford?
I'm gonna be a no on this item, not because it's not important. I support piggybacks, but for anybody to tell me I don't know what my own budget is, that's unacceptable. If I asked Chair right now, what's the county commission budget? I could either look it up, or he could go to the CAO and say, here's the number. What I end up getting was, I don't know the number, but this is what we spent. We spent, I don't care about A through G yet. I want to know what the dollar amount is. That is within the CAO's office, which we don't have in the budget book. It may not necessarily matter to some people because of what's being given. Commissioner Mills, you asked a good question. Where are the money going to come from? I can tell you what's going to happen. That maintenance of effort for the mayor is going to go up, and there's going to be at least seven commissioners going along with it so they can get whatever they want while they are defunding the sheriff. You got somebody from the administration right now in Nashville already working on some stuff. So there's a lot of stuff going on. I know they don't like me sitting in this seat saying it, and there are people that want to prevent that. But as I said before, the same people that you supported right here, those are my employers, not y'all and not these people here. So if I ask, what is the budget that you all, in the budget book, got approved? That was a subset of the CAO's budget, I should know, you should know, if you are, if you're a deputy CAO, you should know. If you're responsible for that office, you should know. So for any elected official legislatively, that is okay for a director or a similar person not to know their own budget, shame on you. So again, it ain't about, it's not on you, but this is something that folks that have been here longer than you, they can't answer either. I vote no on this because it's, it's come down wrong. You'll probably get seven votes on it because people have been told what to do. It's unfortunate. You know, Commissioner Thornton, this is not even a contractual MWB deal. This is just basic common sense. How much is your budget? I don't know, but we did this with... How do you, how can you qualify and quantify what you've done when you don't even know how much you got? I take the silence as me making sense or, and slash or indifference. I vote no on this item. I'm not even going to ask on Monday how much you got, because it's going to be the same house. You should at least know how much you got in your budget. Sorry. Keep trying to do the good work for my three eight one oh nine and one one six people, but you should at least know what your budget is. I'm done, Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Ford. Thank you all for the report today. I think, of course, if you can be prepared with that information on Monday, that would be very helpful for us. All right, Madam Clerk, please prepare the screen to vote. Item one, Committee Number Eight. All right, we can close the screen and record the vote.
We have, we have I-votes from Commissioners Wright and Chairman Whaley. Commissioner Ford has voted no. We have two I's and one no.
All right, item one will go down with a favorable recommendation. That'll conclude Committee Number Eight, and that concludes committees for the day. Thanks, everyone.